Welcome to the Selectment's Meeting for the Town of Acton, Maine for March 12th, 2019. First item is salute to flag.
What allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a duty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
And I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All for a vote, all in favor, all opposed? Approval of the minutes of the last meeting?
Make a motion to table the minutes of last meeting.
And I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Okay, department heads and committee chair updates.
First scheduled was Animal Control, I have to believe that he could possibly be on the call because I did just speak to him a little while ago and he was all set for five, so let's skip him for now.
Okay. Planning Board?
To the Acton Board of Selectmen, Town of Acton Board of Selectmen on March 12th, Joyce Backshee, Chairman, Acton Planning Board. An update from our last report, that was November 7th. We've been busy on very many diverse issues. Workshops have been scheduled on alternate Wednesdays to review the town's subdivision regulations, zone ordinance, and especially the comprehensive plan. The State of Maine requires plan to be reviewed and updated on a regular basis. We've only looked at the part of the plan that regarded, it comes into regard with ordinances and things like that, just planning board. The rest of it, somebody else who makes a lot more money can take care of. But we have to make sure there's no conflict between what's in our comp plan and what different ordinances might be today because the town has voted changes and new things in our things. All of the changes that we've, in our workshop that we have made, are really not changes. They are suggestions, updating, and in some cases, simply housekeeping. There's a comma where there should be a period, you know? I guess we can't take a gold medal for proofreading in some cases. We have to get these up to date because the voters have the right to either acknowledge these changes or vote them up or down. They have to go to warrant. We've gone over best practical locations, that's one of the most common applications we deal with. This involves reviewing the application and possibly scheduling actual site visits, public meetings. The board is charged with the responsibility of ensuring that anyone within 100 feet of the lakeshore is located as far as possible away from the high water edge, taking into consideration where septics are located, where wells are located, the topography of the lots, the locations of the driveways, and setbacks from the road. The center of the road in our town, and I think the road, fellows can tell me, it's not always the middle of the road. The road can be like this, and this is the middle, but when you look at the real thing, the middle's over here. It's very, it can be very confusing. The board, so far this year, has only had three best practical locations since our November report, simply because it's the winter and our, you know, slowest time. Currently, we are working on reviewing conditional use permit application to establish a home daycare, a conceptual primary plan for a 22-lot cluster subdivision, site plan review application to establish a warehouse and showroom, modifying an existing approved conditional use permit for an event venue, and a mineral extraction permit application. All of these will require site walks, public notifications, and public hearings. And that's, that's just January, February, and, you know, everything, you can't come in and get a permit. It can be six or eight weeks before you're even close to getting one. Planning Board meetings are held the first and third Thursday of each month, that's seven, in the planning department meeting room. The public is invited and encouraged to attend. Our workshops are on alternating Wednesdays in the afternoon, 12 to 2, something like that, and that allows us to take care of our homework, going over our ordinances, going over all of these things, because lately, even though it's a slow time of year, our meetings are running till 9:30. So when we have that, we have to carve out time to do what is necessary. They're all, I hope I see you there. They're all open to the public, and you can have a good idea of how we do it. Anything we happen to do on a workshop, so you know, it may not be all of us, it may not even be a quorum. We go ahead and we have the workshop, and everything is simply put aside, and then at the end of every Thursday Planning Board meeting, we bring up what we saw at the workshop. We fill in, the members, our quorum, because that's when we always have a quorum, we fill everybody in, and then if we need to vote, yes, we are going to suggest this change to go to you, to go to the warrant, that's how we do it. And that kind of takes care of people who are working during the day or who are not available at night. So that is our report for this period. Thanks. And Jennifer, not on the report, but...
That's where I'm going.
Yeah. It's good to see you here tonight. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Glad you're doing well.
Very well, because of Acton Fire and Rescue. And I couldn't have been in a better place, so thank those guys.
Okay. Road Commissioners.
Either one of you gentlemen, did we resolve everything prior to? Do you have anything you wanted to add? You're not scheduled tonight, just, we were chatting beforehand, we're all set then.
Okay.
Set, okay. Old business. Action Plan May Municipal.
So Kim and myself had a eventful tour of the fire and rescue building. We went through the list of everything from public safety with the fire chief, and he went through each item that May Municipal had concerns with, showed us each one, documented them, backed them up with pictures, paperwork, everything was, was done to satisfaction. The only issue is the pressure vessel, which we know, and I've asked him to send out an email to travelers to this company, just to kind of say, just a, you know, reiteration that we're on the list, and just confirm that, and we'll just send that off to May Municipal. I'm not going to hold up the whole report for that, but at least if we can get something in writing, that piece of it's done, so now you and I get to start talking about the fire sta, the transfer station.
Transfer station, that's good.
So fire station is done, you're off the hook.
You didn't find anything else over there on your own that would be a take the hazard risk?
Actually, I did. Do you want to talk about that now?
No, we'll take care of it later. Kind of an inside thing, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Tell my knee that.
Yeah. 1920 Proposed Budget.
So we had the workshop on Monday with the treasurer and Selectmen and myself, went through each line item. I think you had a couple of minor changes that we took care of today. EMA was one of the pieces that you wanted some more information on. Just go through the surrounding towns quickly. Alfred has it incorporated in the fire chief's position, so they really couldn't give a salary. Lebanon didn't call us back. Limerick has a director for 1882 and a deputy at 1294. Limington is closed on Tuesdays. Lyman pays $1,020. Newfield, it's a volunteer. Parsons Field is $1,023.06. Shapley has a director for 3278 and a deputy for 547, and Waterboro, we had to leave a message out. So you guys were paying, was it 500? Was that our original?
No.
No.
1,200.
1,200, $100 a month, so little, I mean, if we averaged them out, we'd still be a little on the low side, but I know that at least had some time to look over some of those job descriptions.
I did, there, it's a lot of responsibility to keep up with that and a lot of meetings.
A lot of meetings.
You know, a lot of skills.
Right, because you really have to be able to organize and then execute if the, the...
Take charge and public speak and just, it's, it's a lot, I think.
Well, we have a blank for now, and if you have number, ideas on the budget before Saturday, I don't know if you want to increase it, just kind of need to know what your thoughts are before Saturday.
Okay.
Or Friday, preferably.
In case we have to make a change.
Yep, that pretty much takes care of B and C. You didn't have anything else on?
No.
C, okay.
No, I'm still working with Mr. Paul.
Yep, okay. Uh, let's see, District 1 equipment. Oh, the old equipment that, yes, the past District 1. We do have the radios back.
Yes.
And soon as snow goes, he's got some stuff under the snow he's going to bring in, and I guess he's still just got to get the sander back, yeah?
Yep.
Which, I mean, it's sitting on a truck in his yard, I don't believe it's moved, and, you know, it's...
And the hay out of the building.
That's right. Yep, yeah, I didn't realize he owned that hay that was in there, so.
Just to go back real quick, Animal Control just replied that he's got a complaint on Buzzle Road, so he is tied up.
Okay.
So that's where he is.
Okay. Anything else on District 1?
No.
Okay, Fitness Center.
So what we just passed out was an actual listing of everybody that has some sort of gym membership. You can see at the top, looks like they're sorted by expiration date, so you just kind of need to go down to the 6/30 of 19 people. I know that there was talk about doing some random checks.
Oh, my.
Oh, my.
There's a lot of people that aren't...
Yep, so I will tell you that my office took it one step further, so we went through and I had my assistant type in all the names and expiration dates, and just beca, and just in case, you know, a form got missed somewhere or misfiled, we cross compared it to the Trio cash receipting in the gym account and matched up everyone, so.
Okay.
Nobody else has paid or is using that, even, we have our exempt guys on here, too, because the fire department member shouldn't be over there unless we have a form on them.
Yep.
So you can see those down there, so whoever wants to start knocking on doors, if people insist they signed up, have them kind of see me.
Thank you.
Okay, Row Bridge Damage.
So because of the last little bit of weather that we got, Mr. Letourneau hasn't had a chance to get those over there, but he is working on it. We've done a preliminary report with May Municipal so that they know something is coming, but the good points that came from Joe, I mean, it's really hard to get estimates and file amounts that we think it's going to be until he's able to get a better look at it, so we're hoping that as soon as the weather breaks, we can finish filing that claim. And he did ask me, I told you your sign was in for Middle Road.
I picked it up, but we need, we have to stop it.
Okay.
We need to get some more brackets, though.
You need some brackets?
Yeah.
Okay.
I tried, went down, it was quite a long line, I couldn't get the hours.
Okay. Just think about how many you want, let me know as soon as the meeting's over. And then the sharp corner ahead, he asked me to go ahead and hold off on that, so that's why that sign's not been ordered.
We do have arrows at the shed, too, so I'll come Friday, I'll put some of them up around the corner, too.
Okay. Okay, anything else on Row Bridge?
No.
Damage, okay. Seventh Street?
So Seventh Street, we started taking a look at the application a little closer with the ordinance. I have turned it over to the town's attorney so that he can decide if all of the qualifications have been met. The previous road commissioner, Dave Winchell, actually went out and inspected it. There's some language in the ordinance that says that road commissioners and an engineer need to actually look at the road and make sure that it's up to standards based on the ordinance. I also asked, because Mr. Winchell did some of the work, so in an effort to avoid any possible controversy, we asked Joe to work with Dave to just go over it step by step, and I know they had a phone conversation about it, and again, when the weather breaks a little more, they'll take a closer look at it. In the meantime, we should also have a legal opinion. So we're hoping to get it, if all goes well, on this warrant.
I did look at it last Friday.
Oh, you did go out?
With Mark Cody.
You want to come up? So Mark Cody is the property owner that's moved forward with this.
Okay.
So I did meet with Mark last Friday in regards to that, but like I told Mark, and, you know, I have told, I did tell Jen, you know, with the snowbanks, there's four-foot snowbanks. The road looks really good, and he's plowed it with a six-wheeler, so it's, it looks like it's plenty wide, for sure, I just, I can't measure
Yep.
the road width, but it looks good, and I have talked to Dave and whenever
And we're waiting for the, the engineer forum to come in. You'll get a chance to review that, too, so.
But it looks good.
Yep. They've worked hard on it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, anything else on Seventh Street? Liquor License Renewals.
So I spoke to both Iron Tales and KB, KB Restaurants, Potting Shed and Iron Tales, scheduled them both for Tuesday, April 9th. At, now, the postings were for 5:00 because that's what you've done in the past, because you've allowed people to email questions or comments and concerns in advance, so you want to stick with the 5:00?
I think so.
The week before that, which will be April 2nd, there'll be no Board of Selectmen's Meeting because that's our special town meeting for the school budget.
Okay.
So we'll need to talk about meeting that week as it gets a little closer to sign warrants and stuff, but, so we'll start advertising this, public hearings on April 9th, 5:00, for both Potting Shed and Iron Tales. So if you have any concerns on either one of the liquor license renewals, let me know, please.
Okay. New business, town meeting, election dates, and nomination papers.
It's that time of year, and I'm gonna pull up my cheat sheet because I'm missing that document. Okay, so based on a law change and the availability of nomination papers, we've had to set the town meeting for Saturday, June 22nd. It is a week later than we normally have it, but the nomination paper rule changed as far as how many days they have to be available, in an effort to make sure that we're doing that legally incorrect, we're just moving, moving it out one week, so. Nomination papers for the following seats are available in the town clerk's office beginning at 9:00 today, this morning, must be returned no later than 4:00 on the 23rd. So we have one Board of Selectmen assessor and overseer of the poor, one school committee member, and one District 1 road commissioner. So the deadline to turn those in is Friday, April 23rd. If anybody has any questions, let me know.
Town meeting time, is that going to be at 8:00 AM?
Yeah, I was going to ask you, oh, look, there's my posting, nomination papers. Wrong pile. Are you laughing at me? That's up to you, we're going to create the warrant, what do you think? Are you really, you want to start at 8?
I don't see why we can't.
8:00 AM on Saturday. Okay, they're going to start town meeting at 8:00 AM on Saturday. Means my ballot clerk needs to be there at 7.
Anything else there on all that?
Nope, we'll get you some drafts, we're working on it.
Okay. Quick Claim Deed.
So good news, the property owner on, what road was that? Avenue?
A.
Avenue A, yes. We were able to track down, so all is well, they have paid the entire payment, including the administration fee, so we've created a quick claim deed for you guys to sign to get the property back over to the original owner. So I'll give you that. It does need to be witnessed, so if, Robin, you want to come up maybe and witness after they sign it, because I've got to notarize it, so I can't serve as the witness.
Okay. Inhabitants of the municipality of Acton, a body corporate, corporate and public, located at 35 H Road, Acton, Maine, for considerations paid, released to, I'm not going to mention the people's names, a certain lot of land in Acton, map 146, lot 025, it's located at 113 Avenue A. Yeah, that's all the same information, so, yeah, so this property's been turned back over to the owner, they've paid everything they needed to pay within the time specified. So, what are your wishes?
I make a motion to sign the quit claim deed.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, to sign the quit claim deed, for, I'm just going to reiterate the map and lot, 146, lot 025. Okay, moved and seconded, all in favor? All opposed?
You guys all understand what you're signing?
Yes.
Signing it on your own free will?
Yes.
This is good news.
It is good news.
It's very good news.
Like I said, you know, when we...
I must feel like we need to do, do things backwards on some of these.
Yeah, when we were going through it, you know, I said it's the worst, the worst part of the job is to take somebody's property for non-payment, you know, these folks have, I mean, it's kind of a fluke how it was found, but
Yeah.
It worked.
Worked.
So, okay. Okay, open audits.
Witness, 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 we're going to sign your name on each one of them. All right, so one email, this is, I asked Michelle to print it, it was from Smith Associates CPA. Good morning, Michelle, thank you for including our firm in your RFP process for servicing. Unfortunately, after conferring with the partners, we reluctantly had to conclude that we will not be able to submit a proposal to serve the town due to existing commitments. So this was just one of the companies that said they didn't, they weren't interested because they were too busy.
Sure.
And then you got two, and they are still sealed.
Okay.
Two, how many did we?
Other than the advertising that was done, I believe it was sent to 10 different companies.
I thought there was a number.
I also have a hard time cut, cutting butter with this knife.
Trying to sharpen it.
Yeah. Yep, Selectmen Shields have the best knife, you just open these. Yeah, okay. Both of those have been opened. And we have... Okay, let me get to the...
Who's that one from?
RKO, Runyon, Princeton, and Willet. Trying to see where they hid the page with the pertinent information. It's always good to go to the index, I guess. What was it, P, 21? 21, right there, okay. So RKO, it's a one-year bid. The town is $9,000. And the school is 5,000. Now, they did put in a three-year bid. For a year being June 30th of 19, and then 20 and 21. 8,800 and 4,800 for the first year, 9,000, 5,000 for the second year, 92 and 54 for the third year, uh, 50, yeah, 52 for the third year. So, I don't think we asked for a three-year, but...
No, it just goes up a little bit?
Yeah.
Each year.
Yeah. Yeah, $200 a year, if we wanted to do a three-year, so, that's RKO.
I'll make copies and send them to you, and also give them to the treasurer to...
Get it to the treasurer, yes. Yep, she's got the big weight on it. She's the one that has to work with these folks. Nothing else in that. Okay, and this one here is RH, R. Smith. And let's see. Okay. So it looks like town audit price will not exceed, okay, will not exceed 9,500. That's for the town side, and that is, did we ask for a one-year or a three-year bid?
Have to look, they were just on bid.
Okay. But they have, they have a three-year price schedule, and it's 9,500 for the next three years. For the town side, the school side is 3,900.
39 for three years? I was wondering if it was 39 for the three years?
Yep, 39 for the...
So they keep the same price?
Yep, yep.
So it didn't change.
Yep, so the town is 95 and the school is 39, so. That's ours and whatnot, so that looks like the price.
So it does say in there that the town, the town would entertain multi-year auditing proposals not to exceed a three-year, so that may be why they put it in there.
Okay, so we could take either a one-year or a three-year?
Yep.
Okay, we're up to three years. Okay, there are the two bids that we got. Give those over to Michelle and see where we go from there. It seems the difference, do we normally go to the school as well and give them the information? Or do they just go on our recommendation?
They usually just go on that recommendation, but I mean, we can involve Kim in the process if we'd like.
I, wouldn't be a bad idea, I mean, it's 5,000 versus 3,900.
Right.
If I'm reading that right.
And one of the other, other things, too, is to consider is the hourly rates underneath there, and that's what Michelle will pick out for you, because she's going to pull out everything that they need to do, but the, you know, any budget entries or any, you know, help that we need during the year, or any questions that we have, these hourly rates come into, come into play as well.
Which we do have, I mean, it's not a one-shot deal.
Oh, no, we definitely, we need them year-round, so.
Yep, yep, okay.
I'll get it over to her.
That's the audits. Certification.
So I get this letter in the mail, it says, Dear Mrs. Rue, congratulations are in order for the Town of Acton. The May Municipal Tax Collectors and Treasurers Association has approved Michelle Rumney as a certified treasurer. The certification process has required many hours of dedication to achieve. The certification process requires that applicants receive training in a number of courses that relate to their field of expertise. Michelle will be recognized for receiving the certification at the MMTCTA Annual Conference being held on May 16th, 2019, and in the MMTCA Newsletter, dollars and cents. The MMTCTA understands the investment of time and resources it takes to achieve this status. You may want to check with the town's insurance carrier to see if this would entitle the town to a discount on your public official's liability insurance or bond issue for this position. We encourage you to ask your insurance company and find out. Congratulations once again. So first and foremost, it is a, it is a very difficult, it's difficult to achieve this level of certification through them for the treasurer's piece, so this is a huge deal for Michelle, and it does lower the rates, we've already looked into it, so, definitely put a...
That is awesome.
Congratulations, Michelle, and thank you.
Definitely.
Putting in the time.
Yep.
I think it's in, I can't remember where she said the presentation was, it's somewhere wayy, way up there. I thought, road trip? No further.
Oh.
Does Langley have a bangle?
I think so. Yes.
Actually, I know there is, I've been there. Up into the county. Okay, District 1 Road Commissioner.
Okay, so now we have gotten through the town's decision to stay with an elected road commissioner. I had a conversation with Burke and Clegg today in regards to, this is how far we are out with remainder of the term, what do we really need to do, and he is confident with the way the statute was worded that you have the authority to appoint Mr. Langley if you so choose for the remainder of the term.
Okay.
I'm sorry, there's a pen clicking out there. Can anybody else hear it?
Oh, yeah, I've heard it, but it doesn't seem to bother me.
Sorry.
I know it tends to bother you.
It's all I can hear.
It's okay.
Is it me?
Oh, you do it, too. There's someone in Warton Finance that does it, too.
No, it's somebody, I know there was somebody out there. Okay, see, I don't know, is there anybody else other than Dave Langley? What is your wishes? We have a... We have a, uh, we can appoint him until the end of, uh, the end of June.
I would love to do that, if it's something he's interested in doing.
Definitely.
Did you speak ahead of time?
Yeah, he's good.
Yeah, is it okay with you, Dave?
We really appreciate it. We've talked about it off and on, he, yeah, we're good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, we definitely thank you for stepping up and, and all you've done, both of you, actually, but, you know, you, I mean, you've been in and out of this two or three times now, maybe, actually, probably half a dozen times this has happened now since, since, uh, November, so, okay. So. Here we have certificate of appointment. Selectmen's Office, Municipality of Acton, Maine, two, David Langley. The selectmen for the municipality of Acton do in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine hereby appoint you as interim road, uh, District One Road Commissioner within and for the municipality of Acton until June 30th, 2019, given under our hands this 12th day of March, 2019. What is your wishes?
I'll make a motion to appoint David Langley as the interim District One Road Commissioner until June 30th of 2019.
I'll second that.
Move to second it, in discussion. Call for a vote, all in favor? All opposed? I've done that so many times, I can almost recite it without reading it.
Yeah.
Okay, posting road fines.
So, both road commissioners have posted the roads limiting heavy weights, so we have put that on cable, we're running it in the newspaper, it's online. We are asking everybody to call the road commissioners directly, their cellphones are listed everywhere that we've got the posting. Please don't call the town office, um, we cannot help you, we can only give you their numbers, um, so call them directly. We do have an ordinance that was adopted by the voters, um, back in January of 2011 that restricts vehicle weight on posted ways. Um, so, in here, it talks about the fines, and in speaking to the Sheriff's Department, Deputy Shaw indicated to me that, um, he can't enforce it without knowing what the direction of the selectmen are. So, it's, so you need you to, penalties. Any violations of this ordinance shall be a civil infraction, subject to a fine of not less than $250, nor more than 1,000. So, I'm looking for, um, a motion from you, so each violation shall be deemed a separate offense. In addition to any fine, the municipality may seek restitution for the cost of bridges or damages. Prosecution shall be in the name of the municipality brought before the Maine District Court. What Dan needs to know is how much you want him ticketing people for. And Joe and I had this conversation, I don't think Dave and I ever made it that far, but there is a, a little blurb in here that gives the authority to, um, the Sheriff's Department, the road commissioners, and other designees, as the board decides. Uh, Joe thought it was best to, um, just let the Sheriff's Department handle it, because we talked about, you know, one warning, and then the $250 fine, or, and if we have two or three different people giving warnings, then they're not gonna be able to decide or cross-reference when, you know, when warnings were given, so if Dave is okay with that as well, they've both got Dan's cellphone information, um, they just contact him and say, you know, company A, B, and C is going on posted roads again, and Dan can follow up, if you're okay with that, Dave. With the other situation, that other road?
Oh, no, I was just saying, I spoke to Dan about that, I said, for Maine, I said, if you see something, give me a call, and we'll discuss it when you see one.
Yeah, he was hoping that we'd make the same decision across the, the board, so that, and Joe seemed fine with that, so. Um, so really, we're just looking for fees, he needs some direction from you.
So, you're saying we should leave it up to the deputy to choose the fee?
No, I'm saying, I'm saying that, that Dave and Joe are not going to be, for the most part, waving down trucks and giving warnings and issuing fines, which they have the authority to do within this ordinance, we're leaving it up to the Sheriff's Department to do that piece. They're gonna communicate directly with him if they see trucks that are, you know, crossing when they shouldn't. But no, you guys need to decide how much the fees are. I mean, you could do a thousand for everybody. I read you the one line, so as long as you're within that, you're-
And it's 250 to a thousand?
Not less than 250, nor, nor no more than a thousand.
What about 500, that's kind of middle of the road.
And did we talk about the number of time? Did someone violate it?
And that's, I mean, that's also, um-
And would it go by?
Well, and that's gonna be difficult, too, because keep the, keep in mind that Deputy Shaw is not always on duty, so when it comes to warnings, if you decide to go that route, um, and I think it was Joe that said to me, you know, there are big orange, big orange signs, you know, there's your warning.
And they know what they're looking for.
Oh, yeah.
Right, so if a different deputy is covering, you know, he may not know that Johnny already got a warning, so, you know, maybe you do away with warnings altogether, um, you've got some audience, audience members that feel like it should be higher.
If we wanted to do 250 for the, you know, first offense, 500 for the second, a thousand for the third offense.
Whatever, whatever you go with.
They just keep records in their system.
They'd have records of who did it, yeah.
Yeah, and all I was gonna say is, and that's something that me and Joe, we've spoken about, I mean, we do have delivery trucks that, um, guys that are out of the area, they, you know, and they get turned around, so on and so forth, and as we all know, our GPS doesn't always put you where you are. But there are certain criteria that will push the envelope as far as they can. Um, both, all day long, me and Joe have been on the, the phone, contractors calling lumber yards, very grateful, we, you know, we've talked to them, so on and so forth, and, and everything, so, um, the response for our postings and being on the webpage has been very positive, we've got a lot of feedback today, and it's all been good, but we also, like I said, there's, there's a, there's always somebody that needs to, you know, let's see how far we can go with this, so.
So, do you have a recommendation with those numbers?
I'd, I'd put it at a thousand, you know, I mean-
Just flat out, a thousand bucks, and that's it?
You know, because if, if a road gets bunged up, you know, and we have problems, it's gonna cost you over a thousand dollars to fix it, you know, and, and most-
They'll only do it once.
Exactly, you know, um, but that's, that's your call.
Joe, do you have a recommendation?
You gotta look at the financial impact of it.
And they're not gonna push it if they know it's a thousand.
Right.
And we can, I mean, and we can post that, did you wanna make a recommendation on the number, Joe?
It's up to you, what do you, I mean-
And we'll leave a little bit of discretion here for Dan.
Oh, yes, exactly, I mean, if you, if you've got a delivery truck, and the guy is not completely from around here, or something, that has happened before in other towns-
But aren't your numbers on all of the, so they can pull over and call you and tell you about their situation?
Exactly.
Okay, so what kind of motion?
You okay with a thousand? To the mic.
That would be a possibility, in my eyes, to do a first offense, second offense, but if you do the one-time deal, it's-
You probably won't do it again.
They probably won't do it again.
Okay. Okay, what's the wishes of the board? Be lenient, or be hammered down?
Ouch.
What about a first and second, five and a thousand?
You could.
I don't know, I mean-
As long as the, you know, when you pull them over and they're paying the 500, that second time's a thousand, they'll be like, but by then, it's too late, the damage is done, right?
Right, so maybe we should just go with a thousand.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I think there was a stipulation in there about additional damages, wasn't there?
Uh, yes, as far as what you could do, and how you could-
This is the, this is the attention getter, so.
Go with a thousand.
And just remember that town, too, has to go through the collection agency part, once he writes the tickets, he's done.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
We use the same collection agency that the fire department does, they're pretty good.
Not for something like that, no, it'd probably fall under your tax collectors' one thinking.
You might need Guido for some of these.
I'll make a motion to, um, place the fine at a thousand dollars for driving over posted roads when you're not allowed to, whatever that wording is.
I'll second that.
Okay, move to second it to make the fine a thousand dollars for driving over a posted road in the town of Acton. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor? All opposed? Off we go.
So, this is the first time a fine's been, I haven't voted on this before?
They've never enforced it?
Well, yeah, they must not have enforced it over the years, or just given verbals, because he, I mean, he took the time to read it, and reached out to me and said, you know, what do you want me to charge?
Right.
All there.
Yep, I mean, and that's one thing he can do, is enforce our ordinances.
Right, he can't do it without your guidance.
Right.
He'll, he'll make good, yeah, he'll make good judgments, I'm sure, then.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay. CEO upgrades.
Uh, that was just kind of an FYI, to let you know that, um, remember, when we started the budget process, Code Enforcement had some wish list items in his budget. Um, we were able to get some of them done out of this year's, um, maintenance account, so we, um, put, got the window put in that he wanted in his office, uh, they, yesterday replaced all the lighting, lights down there. Um, they are still waiting for some additional bulbs, so right now, it looks like it's, there are two different bulbs, but that's just because we're waiting. They replaced the fan in the bathroom, so, um, and we've got the handicap ramp, not ramp, we've got the handicap railing coming for outside, so that the railing is complete, so that if you step down, you didn't fall.
Straight, you won't fall.
Right.
Something to hang on to.
Because there would be something there to grab.
So, why, why is there no railing at the fire station?
Let's talk about it off camera.
Okay.
Because it's only that high.
Oh, you said that.
It's about the same, it's about the same height.
It's about eight inches.
Yeah, yeah, it's more like six, that's okay.
I think it's big enough.
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't be a bad idea, really, because, you know. Okay, public comment? Anyone from the public?
Cindy Hart. Um, April 4th, there is going to be a stream crossing presentation in Falmouth. This credits, um, anybody working on the roads towards their erosion control. Anybody working on our roads has got to be certified in erosion control, because they can't work within 75 foot of the water or bridges if they're not. Uh, this, also, anybody, the selectmen that can be there, the stream crossing money is the one shot we have for really getting good money back in town, 50/50. Everybody will be there, the DEP, there'll be people there to outline exactly how to go through it. I've signed up for it, Leslie Berlin has, where this is the only one in southern Maine, I'd suggest that anybody that wants to go, sign up immediately, because the people that want to be recertified will be trying to sign up for this, too, rather than having to go up north.
And did you say where to sign up at?
Uh, the Audubon is running it now, I tried to send it, and Elise said she couldn't read-
I couldn't forward it.
She couldn't forward it. Were you able to get?
I don't think, no one sent it to me.
Because I, when I tried to forward it, it broke down into computer language.
It's the same one that I, that, um, you mentioned, that I think you, that your, um, town administrator's going to from Shapley.
So, who would you like me to forward the email to, I know what she's referring to, all the road commissioners and the rest of it. Is there a fee associated?
Road Commissioners, Road Committee on Warrant and Finance.
Is there a fee associated with it?
Thirty-five dollars.
So, are individuals paying, are individuals on these committees paying for their own, or obviously, the road commissioners have a training budget, or have some, but what about other people? Warrant and finance, we just cancel, we just, they don't, they don't have a budget, because they never, road committee doesn't have a budget?
No, we both paid for our own, Leslie and I. But it, we should be there.
The road workers would be the ones that we were gonna pay for.
The road employees, okay, so, if you guys are interested in that class, let me know. Oh, you're all set, so you don't need to go, okay. I'll send you the email, and you can decide if you decide you want to let me go.
Yeah, stream crossings, different, Dave, it'd be good to go.
Hi, Joyce Backsy, not emotional. Thank you to the fire department. Um, I think Mike, an older guy, mustache. Okay, and a very young man, who I almost asked him if his mother knew what he was doing.
Yep.
He was a very good-looking, young, young, young man. And I can say, having, having had, I just got out of the hospital this morning at Leahy Clinic, and I was told, go, do, you know, you were scared enough, go get yourself back going and get moving. That's after having, uh, a deep brain vein occlusion. And if it hadn't been for these guys, if it hadn't been for Brenda, our deputy CEO, looking at me saying, you're scaring me, stick your tongue out, put your hands up, and I'm like, well, she's crazy, too, because I'm perfectly fine, but I really wasn't. And being in this building, but those guys from the, uh, rescue did a great, I wouldn't have been here if I was home alone, so, just wanted to make sure.
That is scary.
It was a-
We're awful glad that you're back, you're here with us.
Yeah.
I hope sometimes.
You scared us all.
All the time.
All the time.
But, no, they, we should all be very proud of those guys.
They do a good job.
Great job.
Thanks.
Yeah, I drove, I drove by here, was it Friday afternoon, and I saw the ambulance down below. Lights weren't on, I didn't think anything of it, I'm coming back from Sanford, and they're hallyhooping it, heading for either Bedford or Sanford, one or the other, and then later on that night, I get a message from Jen, it says what happened, and who it was, and, yeah, so, no, that's, I mean-
But we should be very proud of those guys.
Yeah, they're, they're great guys over there, so.
Once they found out the young man had a dick of a driver's license.
He actually has a, has a, what, a CDL? He didn't ask his CDL to drive, drive truck. And, yeah, I've had the same thought with him, it's like, you drive these, your mother know you're down here playing with these trucks. Yeah, I was gonna say, send them to the kids section.
It's so tiny.
Yeah, 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 once again, it's great to have you, and I'm glad everything's worked out for you. So, any other public comment? No, okay. Announcements, meetings are on the website. Uh, Jerry Douglas is gonna be here, talk about paving, um, in an info workshop tomorrow afternoon, or tomorrow evening at 6:00. Uh, budget, budget workshop this Saturday, the 16th, at 9:00 AM here. And that's a, that's a meeting between the, with the Board of Selectmen, the, uh, Budget Committee, or Warrant and Finance Committee, and the department heads. There's no participation from the public in that meeting, but they're more than welcome to come and sit and see the proceedings. Uh, seeking members for the Capitol Improvement Committee, there's a baseball sign-up for the rec on the 28th. And we have that one. These are all the same?
Uh, it's four different sidewalks, they're essentially an hour apart on the same day, you can probably just read the bottoms, just an FYI. Uh, Joyce kind of mentioned in the beginning, but-
I was gonna split them up, but I guess they're all the same, so, yeah.
So, here. Okay, so they're all on Saturday, March 23rd. Um, starting with, starting at 10:00 AM, for the purpose of reviewing a conditional use application submitted by Chester Sawtelle to regrate earth for the purpose of a lawn at MAP 147, lots 003-01 on 11th Street. The next one's at 11:00 AM, for the purpose of reviewing a site plan review application submitted by Mark Boise for the purpose of a retail dock sales facility storage on MAP 241, lots 006-2 on Route 109. The next one's at 12:00, uh, submitted by Bridget Whitman to establish a child daycare at MAP 247, lot 026, at 3,000 Milton Mills Road. The last one's at 1:00 PM, uh, submitted by Darlene Hamm at MAP 260, lot 014, 31 Blueberry Farm Road. If you want more information, call 636-3497, extension 410.
Okay, you have anything else?
No.
Nothing from the library?
Uh, the, well, the eels, the woman's coming back to talk about the eels, the, um, fantastic, fabulous life of, life cycle of eels at the Wakefield Opera House on Wednesday, the 20th, at 2:00, um, in conjunction with AWOL in the Gaffney Library and the Acton Library.
And we had good butter making?
We had awesome butter making, we had 18 kids in there, and I, I don't know how we all fit in the library. Shaking little souffle cups of cream.
Raw milk.
It was, it was good.
Yeah, it was good.
Good.
A lot of kids.
Yeah.
That's great.
Do you have anything?
I don't.
Okay, anything, Jen?
No, sir.
Nope, okay. The only thing we didn't have on the agenda was the special town meeting.
Oh, well, I, that was behind me, I was moving on.
No, that's okay, it was, yeah, it's, yeah, uh, we did have the special town meeting last week for, uh, the, the question of, what do they want to have a, um-
Elected?
Elected or a-
Pointed.
Appointed road commissioner, thank you. Uh, no, it's been rough, so, and it did fail, so we are having, continuing with our elected road commissioners.
That's why we jumped so quick, nominations became available, and moving on.
Yep, so, okay. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Move to second it to adjourn, all in favor? All opposed? Good night, all.